I bet you won't hear of him again.
Yeah.
Yeah, Malik Turner saved the game.
Well, that catch that Malique made was...
Yeah, it saved the game. It sure did.
He always did have good hands.
Yes. It's good hands people.
That's what they used to say about Chuck. Having the appointed time of 5:30 arriving, I'd like to call them Tuesday, November 12th, 2019 Committee Meeting to order. Would you please stand for Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, would you please take the...
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman De Senso.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, the quorum is present.
I would accept the motion for approval of the October 29th, 2019 Committee Meeting.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Madam Treasurer, would you please present the treasurer's report?
Thank you, Chair Fulgenzie. Treasurer's report for the Corporate Fund for the month of October. The beginning balance is $10,046,769. We took in total receipts of $10,468,970. We had total disbursements in the month of October totaling $7,583,111, which left the Corporate Fund ending balance in the month of October at $12,932,628. Thank you, Chair Fulgenzie. That concludes my report.
Thanks. Are there any questions regarding the OBM contract report? Seeing none. Are there any presentations tonight?
No, Chairman.
Next, we have the ordinances tabled to remain in the committee. Mr. Clerk, would you please read those ordinances?
2017-103, 2018-110, 2019-008, 2019-276, 2019-430, 2019-454, 2019-455.
Okay. Would you please read the ordinances for CWLP?
Will do.
Any consideration?
CWLP, 2019-465, an ordinance accepting bids and authorized contract UW 20-09-54. Channel dam access bridge replacement with Rayhan Brothers Incorporated doing business as Singmo Construction Company in an amount not to exceed $76,742.19 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2019-466, an ordinance declaring one substation power transformer as surplus property and accepting and authorizing the execution of contract number UE 20-09-55 with Emerald Transformer for purchase and removal of said property in an amount of $2,918.22 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes.
2019-467, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of Cisco Smart Net Support Maintenance for the core infrastructure equipment from CDW Government LLC from state contract in an amount not to exceed $53,092.99 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2019-468, an ordinance authorizing a renewal of five-year maintenance agreement with Environmental Systems Corporation to provide support for the continuous emissions monitoring systems in an amount not to exceed $174,737.50 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2019-469, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of Microsoft software licenses from CDW Government LLC from a state contract in an amount not to exceed $236,278.14 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2019-470, an ordinance authorizing a renewal of a five-year agreement with Emerson Process Management Power and Water Solutions Incorporated for Westinghouse Distributive Process Family and Oviation Control Support in an amount not to exceed $697,618 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2019-471, an ordinance declaring a parcel of real property to be surplus property, directing the sale of said real property and authorizing the publication of a notice of said sale and request for proposals for the Office of Public Utilities.
I have a motion. Move to consent?
Second.
Discussion, go ahead.
What's the story with this parcel or is it...
Sure, this is out on East Lakeshore Drive, and about a year ago, a homeowner, private homeowner called us because the title company had identified that there's a little sliver of property blocking their property from the road. And it's kind of an artifact of before there was even the road. So consulting with Corporation Counsel about how to deal with it, really, this is the best way, simplest way to deal with it, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, return back to ordinances that remain tabled or in committee, I'd like to remove a couple ordinances for discussion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we remove 2019-454 and 2019-455 for consultation, for discussion.
Second.
All in favor?
Are those the collective bargaining agreements we held last week?
If I may, Mr. Chairman. I pulled these off the passage last week because there were some concerns about possible severance package that we were not, some of us were not aware of. So if I may yield to Corporation Counsel, if you could please explain that and explain to the Counsel what that is all about, I appreciate that.
If you have the opportunity to look at the attached, or the ordinance, attached to that is a contract, Exhibit A contract summary, and then on the third page is the actual language out of the contract. And essentially, it provides a, an agreed severance package in the event that employees in this particular bargaining unit would be laid off as a result of closing plants. And it provides for basically one week's pay for each year of service, and it also has what is, if I might use kind of a summary, has also what's considered to be a Me Too clause, meaning that if there are other provisions with other bargaining units or employees where a severance package would be of a different or greater magnitude, then they would also automatically be eligible for that.
And for the committee's information, the reason I pulled this off is because we were concerned about severance packages being brought forward, and that was before the explanation, obviously, but being brought forward before we have a plan on what we're going to do with the utility. We got to be very cautious on how we proceed with that. I know some other Alderman has some concerns about that, so basically what this does is it's basically a shell that the unions put into place, is that correct, Corporation Counsel?
This was a proposal from the union, which the city was very much in agreement with, and it is my understanding that this is a, I guess I wouldn't want to use maybe common provision, but not an unusual provision, that the union has used at other, in other organizations, with other contracts essentially. So this was one way to start the discussion, in my view, of a very forward-looking proposal in the sense that it kind of sets a base, but if it turns out that there are better benefits, then that ensures that these particular employees will be treated the same as everybody
That's where the Me Too clause comes in, is that correct?
That is correct.
And so for the...
And we do have the representative from the union here today, so if there's a question or something, but the city felt that this was a very prudent thing at this given point in time to start the discussion.
And I don't think I have objections to it, I don't know about any other council members, but the whole idea of why we slowed this down was because we were trying to protect the people that were going to be affected by this contract. And the thing is, is that if it comes up in front of us before they do any severance packages, those have to come back to the City Council, is that correct?
Well, all, if you recall, all of the, typically, I think you'll see this with the other bargaining groups, typically, the union will want to negotiate the terms of a severance package. So I would say that this would be a normal likely process. However, these all come to the council for review and approval.
Perfect.
As part of the contract.
Thank you.
Now, those that are not covered by a bargaining unit would be treated under just the normal rules of procedure that the city would adopt.
But that...
Civil service, you know, rules.
But non-union people don't have a contract, so how do we, how do we proceed with that?
Well, that'll be through Chapter 36 and any changes that are made directly relating to the issues of employee layoffs that might be tied to plant closures. So I would expect that that would be a topic for discussion for the council. However, at some point, when this kind of shakes out through this process, I think you'll end up with kind of a range of what has been bargained and what comes to the council. So you'll have kind of a range of ideas of what might be appropriate.
Thank you.
Alderman Turner?
And we're looking at the decommissioning of unit or units at CWLP, which is a very daunting task for all of us, everyone concerned, and it's going to have a significant impact on everyone in this room because we're all ratepayers. And I have said on many occasions that in order for any of us to act in a, in a, in a manner that ensures everyone is treated fairly, that we have to have information and we have to have it as quickly as possible. And that continues to not happen, especially around issues related to CWLP. It seems like that, and I'm not saying anything now that I haven't said before, it seems like that they're this island all unto themselves and they're separate and apart from city government. And if we're going to, if we're going to act prudently and make this work, we have to have information. And I think that there was no reason that Alderman Redpath and I had to pull this off and send it back to committee in order to get an explanation. The explanation should have been forthcoming. So I would just say that going forward, hopefully, we can get information sooner rather than later. And I see everybody at CWLP over there, people over there looking at me all crazy like I'm saying something that's out of line. What I'm saying is not out of line, and you guys know what I'm talking about. And I just think that it's, it's unprofessional and it should, and it should not happen.
Mr. Chair? I just want to put this in balance because we did receive information about the severance package. It was in our packet three weeks ago, and I mean, I've got it right here. So I think, I think it's an unfair shot to say that we were, we had to hold this because we weren't given the information. I think when this went through the committee three weeks, or two weeks ago, you know, maybe we received it a week before that, and anyone here could have read what we received and made a comment about it. And I think our Corporation Counsel gave a good explanation. This is really a hold-harm-severance agreement for the machinists. Why? Because as our Corporation Counsel just said, the language of the severance agreement says that if any group of employees gets a better severance deal than what's stated in here, this group gets the same deal that we later agree to. So this is really a good agreement. I think it was well thought out. And the way this is worded, it says, should any other terminated employees be given a greater severance package than what's given here? I think that would mean either union or non-union. Is that correct, Mr. Corporation Counsel? That the language is very broad language, that we're not trying to, in any way negatively impact any of these machinists here, by the way this is worded.
Alderman McMiniman, I wasn't trying to take a shot at anyone. I was simply, I was simply saying what I think, I was simply saying what I think eight other people around this horseshoe are thinking. So I wasn't taking a shot at anyone. The second thing is, a couple of weeks ago, or was it last week, when the gentleman was here that was going to be working on this, on this project, that he just appeared, we didn't know any of that was happening, and he talked, he did a long presentation about decommissioning and how all that was, what he was going to do and what his scope of work was. And at that time, we talked about, I think I or either Alderman Redpath asked very specific questions about employees, how that was going to, you know, how that was going to happen, how we were going to deal with, deal with all of that. And everything that we kept getting back was, that's down the line, we're working on that, none of that, we don't know anything about that. That would have been a perfect time to talk about, these things are in play, these things are in place. So, you know, people can agree with me or disagree with me. All I'm saying is, is that I believe that communication is key, and in order for everyone to act in an appropriate manner, we should have all of the information sooner rather than later.
Alderman to center.
Thank you, Chair. I was going to say the same thing. We shouldn't be talking about severance packages or anything else until we decide what we're doing, until we know what we're doing. It's ironic to me that, you know, we're talking about decommissioning and, but we never hear anything from CWLP, but I have a net metering ordinance up, and we get 50 emails last week. That's just the fact of the matter. So, you know, what's, what's going on? What are we doing? People are tired of waiting to see what's going to happen. We need to make some decisions. We have had this in hand since last November, but it wasn't presented till last April. So let's get this out here, let's make some decisions, we're ready to rock and roll. That's enough.
Alderman to center.
Thank you. And, you know, Corporate Counsel said that we would talk about the, the non-union people, the management out there. If we shut down three units, we need to look at salary structure, how many managers we have, because I don't see a need to have high-paid individuals out there when we have one plant. And, you know, I just, we need to get on that right away because, you know, what I, again, a couple of weeks ago, I said, what I will not accept is somebody to come to us right away and say, we got to vote on this because we got to get this done and get these plants closed. And that's not the way it's going to work. We need to get some RFPs on the street on buying the best, I'm sorry, the cheapest, reliable power we can. That's the first thing we got to have, because we need to know and how much we're going to have to buy, we got to have all that in place. The other thing is, we need to look at it, and Mayor, I'm anxious to hear from the, from the company that we brought in, you know, do we take these units and just mothball them? And when we do take, you know, let's say 31 and 32 hypothetically, do we mothball them and then save the high cost of taking them to the ground for future City of Springfield council members? When, the longer we wait, the more expensive it will be to drop them? You know, things like that, we need to, these are things that we have to look at. And, you know, just to say, we're just going to shut this down and we're going to do this, that, we need plans, we need rate studies to see, okay, if we do this, what's it going to do to our rates? We don't have anything. And I'm not, this, you know, when you look at this, this is a $100 million decision, if not more. And I'm not going to vote on for anything that I don't have the data on, I'll be a no vote, I'll tell you that right now, because I won't have, as of right now, based on what the IRP supposedly said, and I've got my concerns about how that IRP was done, and everybody knows that, I can't vote for it.
Yeah, Doug Brown could come up, address the, Scott Madden had, we asked, actually, I think it was Alderman Redpath and I asked Scott Madden, that's the consulting group, about the options for decommissioning, do you leave in place? Or usually, you would probably take it down to the ground, but the positioning of the plant itself, it's all on CWLP property. So usually, when you bring it all the way down to the ground, that's because it's useful for future development, because it's still sitting elsewhere, so, you know, that's, you can go either way with it. Of course, the cheaper route is just leave in place, but Doug can go over the process with regards to where we go from here.
Just to follow up with you on that though, Mayor, and for the council's information, that was one of the things that they said that they were going to bring back to us and, that should we retire them in place or should we take them down? So we should have that data when that report comes back, and I think it's pretty, getting pretty close, they're getting ready to bring that back to us, I think, within the next couple of weeks here, isn't it?
I mean, really Madden was brought on to help facilitate the discussions between the functional areas of the, of the utility and the city. So it's looking at all the different departments and the issues that arise with decommissioning units. So I guess that process, you know, we, basically, all those functional areas will turn back, they're in their data, there are their items, their tasks to Madden, they'll consolidate that into a list of dates, and then we'll be able to present that, you know, maybe in early December. And, you know, one of the things, though, is that, you know, when we talk about tearing down a facility completely to the ground, you know, obviously, we haven't done that with Lakeside yet, and I think that would be one of the first, you know, structures that we would actually want to demolish before we hit to 31, 32, or 33. And the reason, you know, we haven't demolished that to date is because we, of our cash position. And, you know, and in all reality, our budget is kind of, you know, really putting a lot of dollars into 31, 32, and 33, as far as, you know, the cash flows that we have and managing what infrastructure improvements we do. Once we retire those units, the savings that we would realize, you know, sooner than later would be going towards those kinds of activities on plant grounds, looking at, you know, retiring, not retiring, demolishing Lakeside first, and then moving to the Dolman units in that order. The fact is, though, too, that some of the Dolman structures are used by other functions, so there's common equipment that's used by four, we would have to look at that before we would demolish anything, as well as the office buildings for the power plants are part of that structure as well. So it's not just as easy as demolishing Lakeside facility, so it's a little more complicated. That's why that's going to be pushed out just a little bit further as well, so. But the first task is to, you know, present that information, what Madden has, you know, and follow up with basically some other additional data that we're kind of finalizing right now, some of the work that we've done internally to kind of match up with what the Energy Authority has done, with using some of the data that they've had and with what we've had, and to try to kind of cross-check things a little bit, just internally, so to make sure we're making the right decisions. And we'll be glad to share that with all of you, so.
And the last item is the coal contract, and that's an important piece because, you know, that's what we use for comparables with any power purchase agreements. So that should be forthcoming, Corporation Counsel, before too long? Do you want to get an update on that?
No, the, the contract amendments are in the process of being prepared, they have to come to the council for review and approval. So that should be most likely in December.
That's for the re-opener, the re-opener?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director, I think it's been stated pretty clearly tonight that we would just appreciate when information is available, that it not be presented right before our meeting, that we have an opportunity to meet with you and talk about it and have questions answered, and then we come to the council and we discuss it publicly, inform the public, and, you know, and then ultimately make a decision. Because these, as Alderwoman Turner clearly stated, are decisions that are going to impact not only everyone in this room because we're ratepayers, but generations of Springfieldians. Thank you.
To be honest, I don't quite understand why there seems to be some anger and frustration here. What we have here...
Not for me, I'm not angry.
I'm not frustrated, angry either.
There's two, we've got good news here. We've got two ordinances that were negotiated, the collective bargaining agreements. The union was in agreement with the ordinances, our negotiating team was in agreement. We had this information three weeks ago, we had a chance to talk about it then, but nobody decided to talk about it when it was at the committee two weeks ago, and we had a week before that to look at it. And, you know, these are contracts that have expired, so we're not going to hold these up forever. And basically, we're keeping the door open with these contracts because basically, they say, you know, they're anticipating the potential of severance agreements, but these say that if we do more work on severance and we work out something more favorable to our employees, these particular employees will get the benefit of that. So I don't see what the harm is here in going forward with contracts and, you know, it's at the committee hold that the City Council is giving information for the first instance. All these contracts that we're going to talk about tonight, you know, we all had them, got the information at the same time, and committee hold is when we're supposed to talk about it. So I don't, it's like, we want to punish the administration for not giving us stuff before we're supposed to get stuff. We're supposed to get stuff when we get an ordinance in our hand and it's been finalized for presentation to the council. If we start getting information before that, we're going to be running into, we'll draft number one, draft number two, and it's going to be confusing because we won't have a final product for us to look at and to vote upon. So I just think we got to just calm down and not be so eager to find fault with everything.
Mr. Chairman, appointing the parliamentary procedure. Can we have the clerk read the ordinances so we can make a decision if we want to move forward with them? Thank you. 2019-454, an ordinance authorizing execution of tentative collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers, District Number Nine, from October 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for passage.
Second motion. Any discussion?
Is that on debate or...
Debate, I'm sorry. Yes, debate.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2019-455, an ordinance authorizing execution of a tentative collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers, District Number Nine, from October 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2024.
Move for passage for debate.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
Public safety. 2019-472, an ordinance declaring eight unclaimed bicycles being held in Springfield Police Department's evidence room to be surplus property and authorizing the Springfield Police Department to donate said bicycles to Girl Scouts of Central Illinois and Freedom and Holiness Mission.
Move to consent?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just, and this is again, I just don't know this, how long are bikes held before they're declared surplus? I don't know if that's a Corporation Counsel or...
I can't answer your direct question, but they are stored for a long period of time, and people are given opportunity to come and claim bikes. time, and people are given opportunity to come and claim bikes, and so they've been there considerable amount of time.
I know there are a lot of, I've gotten a lot of complaints from constituents about bikes. It's one of, it's an item that gets stolen a lot. I'm sure you know that, so, okay, thank you, I just wanted to know, thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
Public Works, 2019, 473, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of rock salt from Compass Minerals America Incorporated under state contract PSD 20-416 CMS-Boss S4-P-12695, in an amount not to exceed $591,240, uh, $591,240 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, yeah, I just, is there a reason rock salt has gone up so much, or did they already see our roads today?
Somebody probably changed the rules on it.
For me.
Due to the supply, Illinois waterways, there were partial closures that basically increased the shipping costs. Mississippi River, we had 60 days of flooding this past spring that also caused some issues with barge and diesel shortages. And then, and actually, internationally, the, in Chile, a bulk salt loader from our previous supplier collapsed, decreasing half the loading capacity. And then there are also some strikes in Canada and Bahamas. And then also, due to how great the prices were last year, a lot of various municipalities and people, basically, got as much as they possibly could, so unfortunately-
Did they also do that? I wasn't there.
We did do that, we got our 120% that we could get, so.
Okay, great.
And we were full at the beginning of this year.
Some people contacted me about getting that on the roads tonight.
We did put down over 1,000 tons just the past 36 hours.
Alderman, Hannah.
Nate, did, can we use, like, sand, or something like that, you know, that might be, is it cheaper, or it just doesn't do the work, or what? Do we have other options?
Yeah, we can evaluate other options moving forward. However, the sand gets into, gets into the storm sewer system, as well as combined sewer, and causes issues as well. It doesn't dissipate, it doesn't work, and help break down the snow as well, either.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2019, 474, an ordinance approving the plan for large-scale development of Illinois Presbyterian Home for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Do I have a motion? I mean, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
Finance, 2019, 475, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a tentative agreement between the City of Springfield, Office of Public Utilities, and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 193 Engineers, for the time period covering June 1st, 2019, through May 31st, 2022.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to, Chad, I'd like to thank you for following up with phone calls and talking to us about this. I know that you probably talked to all the aldermen, but I appreciate the call and the information, that was very helpful. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2019, 476, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a tentative agreement with the Labor International Union of North America, Local 477, from October 1st, 2019, through September 30th, 2022.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2019, 477, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a tentative with agreement with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 193 Auto Visual Unit, for the Office of Public Works inspectors, from August 1st, 2019, through July 31st, 2023.
Consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
General City Business, 2019, 478, an ordinance to increase the number of Class D local licenses by one for SC88 Incorporated, doing business as Sixth Street Cafe, located at 214 South Sixth Street.
Consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Noted. 2019, 479, an ordinance to increase the number of Class C local licenses by one for NSFP Incorporated, doing business as Nicky's Soul Food Place, located at 330 South Grand Avenue East.
Move to consent. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2019, 480, an ordinance to decrease the number of Class B local licenses by one for Bond Drug Company of Illinois, LLC, doing business as Walgreens, number 05488, located at 3400 Freedom Drive.
Consent.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just, Ralph, this is a closed Walgreens, that's right.
Yeah, I got a lot of calls on it, people weren't real happy about it, but can't do anything about it.
I remember, and you might too, that there was a McDonald's restaurant at that same corner way back when, maybe 10, 15 years, so Walgreens knocked down the McDonald's restaurant, moved it further south, put in this Walgreens, it looks like they made a bad decision. As it turns out, it's an expensive decision.
Tough for that, it's tough for Westchester neighborhood when they lose their local pharmacy, and that's kind of what that was, but.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
Noted. 2019, 481, an ordinance establishing the holidays for the City of Springfield for the calendar year 2020.
Consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2019, 482, a resolution providing public notice of regular meetings of the council of the City of Springfield, Illinois, for the 2020 calendar year.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Turner.
I noticed that the first meeting in November is on election night, and we usually change that to the Wednesday, so instead of waiting until October 2020, can we do that now?
We could prepare an amendment for Tuesday.
Be busy that night?
Yes. I might, I don't know.
Would you like us to just to prepare an amendment for Tuesday night?
Please.
Okay, yes, ma'am, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2019, 483, an ordinance amending Chapter 50 by adding Section 50.38 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended regarding net metering for the Office of Public Utilities as amended.
I want to hold this in committee, please.
Also, Alderman, since, if you don't mind, I'd like to be added as a cosponsor of this amendment.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Noted.
Thank you.
Are you asking for more cosponsors?
If anyone wants to cosponsor, they can jump on.
I'll cosponsor, subject to possibility of reasonable amendments.
So you're tentatively cosponsoring?
I'm in favor of net metering, there's a lot of particulars here.
I will accept your tentative cosponsorship.
Better put in pencil, not ink.
Gotta get it right.
I will pencil you in, Joe.
Keep it in pencil, thanks a lot.
Oh, good.
Is there any unfinished business? Any new business?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Okay.
Alderman Redpath. Couple of weeks ago, we had some issues about the contract for the police, about the health insurance. Julie, are you able to talk about that? I got a letter today from the executive board from the Springfield Police, Benevolent and Protective Association. Are you privy to that letter, or do you want me to read it?
I have seen the letter. One of the questions that OBM was asked was, was it possible for us to identify any possible additional charges with respect to people coming on and off the plan? And that was OBM's charge. We made an attempt to analyze some data, and the original other post-employment benefit figure was calculated by an outside actuarial study, effective March 1st of 2017. And OBM's conclusion was, it would be difficult for us to isolate any additional costs without such a study.
So could I ask you, or the mayor, or somebody, to please contact the union and discuss this with them, and so they're clear on it before we proceed any further? Is that possible?
Just very briefly, I'd actually, they had sent a letter raising some legal issues and asking about whether or not it's a matter of mandatory bargaining.
Mm-hmm.
I did send them back a letter, we got that letter today, so I did send them back a reply, that I sent a copy to everyone here. There's quite a bit of complexity, which I believe they're fully aware of. I've attached some court cases from the past involving the Joint Labor Management Insurance Committee that was hotly litigated through the courts up to the appellate court regarding the ability for the Joint Labor Management Committee to participate in negotiating either retiree or non-member, i.e. non-union, insurance benefits. So we're going to look closely at that. One, the question they raised was, does the current language, I think they raised the issue of how the current language applies, so we're gonna go back and talk to Safer Shaw, we're gonna look at what the council did before, and you had asked, or the council had asked basically for a recommendation, which I think OBM started to look at, and by way of the costing. Second, they've raised a legal issue about, should we be bargaining with them? The city's past position has been, this goes back more than 10 years, that that is not an item of mandatory bargaining. However, they did supply some cases from other states, we are gonna look at that, and we told them we would reply to them in writing.
I just think it's important that we are open and fair to these guys, and if it's not something that we can do, I don't know that we can do anything about it. But Jim, I think it's important that we keep talking to them. And did you send that letter back to them today?
Yes, we got their letter today.
Because I got this letter this morning, so maybe they're crossed in the mail or something here.
Correct, I had sent it to council coordinator to ask to be distributed to you, but we gave it directly to, back to, remember, they're represented by an attorney, Bronstein.
I understand.
So we communicated back to Mr. Stone with copies to the union executive board, whose purports to that's who the letter is from.
So they got that after they sent me this, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And you have a copy of it, just by way of information, and we do regularly have communications on a regular basis with them.
Thank you.
On a variety of issues, not just this.
We have any citizens?
May I say this, just real quickly, if somebody has a question about the letter, because there is some complexity, please just let me know. Because attached to that, again, I want to make sure that, I don't always know what an alderman may want to ask a question about, so I'm, this is, you know, particularly on some of the issues like this, if you do have a question, shoot me an email, or, you know, I'll try to make the time to meet.
I plan on coming into the, coming to the council, to the city tomorrow and deal with this, so I'll-
Okay, perfect, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no other one wants to address this?
Well, if I can.
I'm sorry.
I think it's the same topic. I got a, I got a text from an individual that was concerned about whether, they seem to be confused, there seems to be some confusion as to whether or not, based on the action the council took not too long ago, that individuals will be permitted to come back onto the city's insurance, and so we need some clarification there. I think that would be advantageous to everybody, and that way we're giving the right answers, and, or pointing the individuals that are asking to the right person. So any suggestion on when we get questions like that, Mr. Corporation Council, who we should-
No, I would say, I think there have been some inquiries, it's my understanding today that there were some inquiries to HR regarding this very issue, and so what we have indicated is that we will give a response in writing, because I think it's, the problem is, when you get a phone call, it's better to do things in writing. So we did get a written inquiry today, actually, from a retiree, so we are going to promptly analyze it and respond to it.
I'll follow up with you as well, thank you.
Alderman.
Chuck, if I may make a recommendation, I pulled the minutes of the council's discussion of this situation from three years ago. The council minutes dated December 6, 2019, and the committee of hold minutes dated November 29 of 2016, and the amendments that were proposed and were passed in the course of that. And I think it would be very helpful for anyone who wants to dig into this issue to go back and look at what we decided three years ago, because it's explicit, there's no ambiguity from what I can see, and from what I've looked at. We've got three aldermen that weren't here back at that time, and the minutes indicate, for example, that we had four police officers that came and talked with us about it. So they, we did listen to them back then when we made this decision. It was Brian Henson, Steve Anderson, Dave Baxter, and Ed Fleisch, and some others came and talked with us. So I think it'd be really helpful for us to review what we did back three years ago.
Alderman, I don't think it's what we did, I think it's just a matter of communication, and I think there's some people that are confused, and that's all I'm asking the administration to do, is to talk to these folks so they understand what's going on, because some of them don't understand. So, Jim, if you don't mind, please, I would appreciate that. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if there's no one else that wants to speak on this, I have one more issue I'd like to run up. Last Wednesday night at Lake Springfield, there was a, I believe, a homeless person who was locked into a restroom out there, and was in there for about six hours before the midnight shift found him in there. And I went to, I don't have all the information, Doug, if you could please look into that situation and get back, or John, or whomever, get back to us on that, because that's a bad deal, that means somebody's not doing their job. And what I'm talking about is, when security goes back and locks gates, or locks doors, or locks buildings, they need to check them before they leave, and that didn't happen in this case, and that person was in there for extended amount of time.
Was it last Wednesday?
I'm sorry?
Was it last Wednesday?
It was last Wednesday, yes, it was. That can't happen. If that would have been severe weather like we had last night, and Alderman Conley, I'll tell you how cold it was out there, but if that would have happened, that could have been dangerous, so we really need to check on that kind of thing. And last summer, we had the same situation, where people were in the park, and there was problems back there, and they locked the gates on them. So security's gonna have to get out of their car and go check stuff before they lock the gates. Thank you.
Any other discussion? We have some citizens request to address the committee.
Kevin Green. Kevin Green. Kevin Green. Next is Harvey. Next is Teresa Haley.
Thank you, committee as a whole, and Mr. Mayor. My name is Teresa Haley, I am the president of the Springfield branch in the state NAACP. I wanted to come to the city as a whole tonight, committee as a whole, just to say that we are watching what's happening with city council, not just the east side, but with all of our aldermen and alderwomen, and we thank you for what you're doing. Secondly, I want to say, as it relates to transparency, we are looking for that from our aldermen and alderwomen. When it comes to procurement, union agreements, we want to make sure that there is sufficient amount of minority participation. And as you're talking, I'm not hearing much about minority participation. This is an issue that came up a couple of years ago, I'm a member of Teamsters 916, have been a union steward in the past, and it's very important that these conversations take place, and that that transparency is there, and that we have minority participation on all city contracts. The other thing that I want to mention briefly, the homeless shelter. I just got back from Florida, it was absolutely beautiful, and my heart went out to the family, the young man that testified when we all spoke about the homeless shelter being placed on the east side. What a tragedy for all of us. But I do want to remind members of the council that homelessness is a disease, it's an illness. I lost my uncle this summer, who was homeless, who pushed a grocery cart, who slept in the parking garages, as opposed to going in. Just because you provide a homeless- Just because you provide a homeless shelter somewhere for them to go, you cannot make people go inside. It's tragic, it's unfortunate with a guy being found behind Walgreens, but I believe that his death was not because he was homeless, it was because of his lifestyle, and I ask all of us to examine ourselves and look at our lifestyles and to think about what are we doing as a total community to make a difference and to help all people, because there are people out here in the city of Springfield who don't want to be helped, you can only help those who want to be helped. There are those of us who try to save people, who try to make a difference and say, hey, if I could just get them somewhere. I know personally that the warming center was only filled at 50% capacity, so that tells me, and that should tell all of us, that there are people who just don't want to come inside. A couple of weeks ago, the dog dying over at Pillsbury, the media contacted me several times and says, do you have anything to say? And I said, no, I don't have anything to say, they said, what about the homeless people living over there at Pillsbury? Homeless people have been living at Pillsbury the last 10 to 20 years, and that's a known factor, but I do ask that the city council pay attention to what's happening in all of Springfield, and don't say that had we approved of the homeless shelter and had the NAACP and the other organizations not gotten involved, then it would be open and up to capacity, because that's not true. The proposed site is filled with mold, and why take sick people off the street and put them into a sick building? Would you put your families into those sick buildings? So as we move forward as a community, I ask that we work together, because there are all types of resources throughout the city of Springfield and not just in Ward 2, and please note that the NAACP and other organizations, we weren't opposed to the concept of the homeless shelter, we were strictly opposed to the location. Thank you.
I, I, um, thank you, Ms. Haley, on the minority participation, I have spoken to numerous of our union partners on various projects and they are excited to get those numbers up, I know we do have some training programs and things that we're trying to merge together to really, to really push that, so I definitely agree with you and I'll definitely make sure that we are looking at that, and as far as our homeless situation, again, that's an unfortunate situation, you know, I have spoken to our others, council members, just about, you know, I want to continue to look for solutions, I don't want to keep hanging up on every little knick-knack thing that happens to that population to blame anybody for things that happen or to be pointing fingers or whatnot, because the fact of the matter is, if we want something done, we can do it, there's plenty enough money in this city to build whatever we would need to do, and, you know, that's where I'm at with it, and I'm really over it, I, you know, I don't want to point fingers back and forth, I wouldn't let those opposed to that center push all homeless out as sex offenders or bad people, and I'm not going to let, you know, people push this back on their community as far as it not being there, so I appreciate your comments today, thank you.
Alderman, dissent.
I'd actually like to ask for a moment of silence for Mr. Verdel, he has five surviving children in the city who are in pain regardless of the manner of his death, I think we should be respectful of the man who stood before us and told his story and had pretty much everyone in this room in tears, so I think we can at least give him that, I think we can give him a moment of silence.
Mr. Chair?
Since we're talking about this subject, one, Huerta invited any and all aldermen who wish to visit the city's warming shelter this past weekend, and several of us took opportunity, I think Sean, you went through and maybe Alderman Turner, you went through, and I got to say that, Juan, you're doing an outstanding job, and it was clean and attractive, believe it or not, you've got a good system in place, anything can go wrong, but I think you're setting up the procedures to minimize problems. You've got a meal plan in place going out three or four months already where meals are paid for by our citizens, we've got a very generous community, and the warming center is on top of Sojourner House which can provide for the homeless, Fifth Street Renaissance which has several facilities including their Spring Street Center that, Deb Williams, you're here and you're the president of Fifth Street Renaissance, and you had an outstanding event yesterday at the Veterans Shelter on the South Spring, we've got Helping Hands involved, we've got Salvation Army involved, we've got a generous community that's all trying to do many things to help the homeless, and not everyone can accept that help, and we have victims, but I think there's a lot of good news here too.
Any other citizens request to address the committee?
While we're on the issue of homeless, homeless is not, oh, Michael Higgins, 1808 Court, homelessness is not a disease necessarily, ask the woman who works two, maybe three jobs, four kids, a single parent, that is just one step away from being homeless or who is homeless, so to say it is a disease is not all the way true.
Thank you.
Just a matter of clarification, and I understand where Mr. Higgins is going, but you're absolutely right, there's a lot of variety of different reasons why people are homeless, and I think what she was indicating was there is some mental illness that goes on, and that's what she was talking about, not necessarily, there's a lot, there's a lot that goes on, I was a police officer for 30 years, I've seen a lot of this stuff, and the thing is, is that people are homeless for several different reasons, financial, family, mental illness, all kinds of things, drugs, but she wasn't indicating that it's anything other than that.
Any other citizens address the committee? Second.
Hey, sorry to call you up like that. I know, I want to know that you guys have a little...
Good for you.
I didn't mean to call you, I mean, I was trying to...
No.
Because when people ask, my kids buy, I have somebody buy it.
Oh, it's ridiculous, well, they can contact, every bike that we take in, we have a card that we fill out, so if they have information on that, they can call the front desk, get the information, so we try and do it, like, a minimum six months and a day.
And I hope that when you guys are getting rid of it, I think that's, that's going to be...
Yeah.